Roll call.
Here.
Obidorf.
Yeah.
Eckel.
Here.
Marquette.
Here.
Bruce. Heben. Reynolds.
Here.
Move to excuse Mr. Heben.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Heben, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for May the eighth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for May twenty-second, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Committee reports. First one will be recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Rosford Parks Recreation Committee for five eight twenty-three. In attendance Toby Ladusma, myself, and Brenna Reynolds. Meeting called to order at five fifteen P. M. Beautification projects. Looked at a couple of projects that the beautification committee would like to do in front of the recreation center and at Vets Park. Board liked the projects and would like to see more native plants incorporated into the design. Kayak rental program, the kayak rentals, lockers are open, operational at Vets Park. The cost is twenty-five dollars for two hours. All rentals must be done through their app. Bacon Street pavement. Mr. Ladusma showed the committee a concrete pad at Bacon Street Park that was like, that he would like to move, remove, rather. He has been working with Public Works Supervisor Tyler Colvin on how to get rid of the pavement. People are using this as illegal parking areas and it's damaging nearby green space. Two thousand and twenty-four levy discussion. The board, the board has initial discussions on the upcoming levy proposal in two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Ladusma gave some background on the history of the levy and its current terms. The board would like to go on to, on the ballot in May if April two. Eagle Point, there was discussion on Eagle Point property and what the board would like to see there if there were to become a park. Mr. Reynolds, Mrs. Reynolds talked about a previous poll that was done on Facebook and said that the overwhelming amount of feedback revolved around a pool or splash pad. Mr. Ladusma said that they are targeting the splash pad for behind the recreation center for two thousand and twenty-four. In the meantime, the recreation department plans to utilize the green space for programming starting this fall. More discussion to follow. Upcoming programs, Little League football, six-two deadline, Little League cheerleading, same deadline. Capital improvement projects, two new pieces of cargo equipment were installed and operational. The gym floor refinishing project will be five sixteen. Gymnasiums will be closed during that time, during this time. The safety fencing on the pickleball courts were installed. The concession stand, restroom building construction has started. These projects bids collected and will be starting soon. Meeting adjourned at five fifty P. M. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right. Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee had a meeting Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty P. M. In attendance were Todd Adet, Allison Murray, Tyler Colb, Caroline Zakowski-Eckel, and myself. Items discussed were as followed. Trash bids. Bids will be going out within the next week, next few weeks. Current contract ends September one of twenty-three. Update on Windsor Drive plan. Bid was due to be out on Friday, May fifth. Current utilities that are scheduled to be relocated will be. Update on Elm Street East plan was out for bid for our portion, district award in June, and once all has been scheduled, the date will be released. Glenwood resurfacing. County will design with work to be slated for late twenty-three, early twenty-four, will be resurfaced from Mandell to Buck. Ephes at Rec Center, contractor bids have been received and council to vote on five eight. Salt Barn, Public Works has been doing site work with buildings slated to be started in September. Tyler, update on trucks. Sewer truck was delivered with workers getting trained on it before put on the road and got a bid or working on a bid for a new salt truck. Brush pickup was completed with, with a second round for any extra had been put out for pickup and the meeting adjourned at five thirty P. M.
All right. Any comments or question on Public Works? Mr. Bruce.
Are we, how much of the salt barn are we doing in-house?
Most except for structure. It's designed to build on the hill. Probably use more of our contracts.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Reports of the mayor and administrator. Allison, do you have anything this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. I do. Obviously, everyone knows that the, the bridge got hit a while back and ODOT has let us know not only are they going to repair it, they are going to raise it to sixteen feet, six inches. And in that will be, they're also going to widen, widen it and in that project will be a multi-use path. They will also be reconstructing the Pennard Career Center drive access point. So that's a great project and Mr. Adet, I'm sure you had ninety-nine point nine percent to do with it, if not a hundred, so we thank you. Mr. Watchel, any correspondence?
Correspondence, Mayor.
Okay. Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the Windsor Drive street reconstruction project and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
The sooner we pass this, the sooner we can start the project. Mr. Obidorf.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a question in regards to this or any objections? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six. Obidorf.
Aye.
Eckel.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the East Elm Tree Road reconstruction project and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
And again, the sooner we pass this, the sooner we can start it.
Move suspension, the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any objections to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
On the motion to adopt twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven. Eckel.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the Rosford Marina pump outstation project and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
Mrs. Eckel.
What does that project entail?
It's, it's plugged in all the sanitary in, in the marina and it goes past the concession building, so the concession building is tied into it.
So it's like a little pump station?
It's, it's a pump station and there's two manholes, gravity, so that way we can move the pump, pump, wherever it's, it's going to be used the most. So it's, it was the grant, Allison's grant.
Clean vessel grant.
Clean vessel grant.
The city put in for eighteen.
It's paying for the grinder pump and all the structural.
So they, voters can empty their waste into a location and then it pumps it.
It'll gravity down to the grinder pump and then up the hill.
Okay.
It's going to, it's going to service the whole.
Gotcha. Move suspension, the second, third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight. Eckel.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine is an ordinance authorizing the administration to take the necessary steps to purchase certain parcels of real estate and declare an emergency. This is a first reading.
Todd and Rex, could you come forward and talk about this project a little bit? I saw on social media that some people started a dumpster fire and they don't even live in Rosford, so.
So this project is basically economic development and transportation safety project. So the southwest corner of the Lime City, State Route seventy-nine, seven ninety-five intersection contributes traffic to, to the, to the road system and purchase of all that land in there with any, any other type of activity going in that would generate traffic. So rather than just buying twenty-foot of right away and then another house go, go in there, if we had to take those houses, we could go on with improvements in the intersection. So this is an economic development purchase and it's necessary, like I said, in order to get the intersection. Also, with how we negotiated the bridge with ODOT, we're currently in talks with the turnpike authority to do the same thing. And so this gives us all the additional right of way to raise and widen that structure as well.
So make it clear, there's, there's three owners in this triangle tract there. It's about five, over five acres and the predominant owner is this, is about four and a quarter acres. And this is the critical piece. The other two owners are resident corners of old properties that got cut off by the turnpike. So assuming that those would be easier to take, but ever yet require, this is the by far, the line, line share the property, which is part of our State Route seven ninety-five corridor access point that we started on four years ago.
The residual properties aren't large enough to accommodate a house, so.
And who are our partners in this?
The township, the, the, the school systems, because they're donating right away on the other side, and the county, county engineer's office. There's at least three stakeholders and of course, the port authority and ODOT.
So what about safety?
Well, the, the intent is, okay, so Rex started the, the safety corridor project on, um.
Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, this, this is one of the first pieces moving from west east, improving the intersections. And in order to, to put the, the turn lanes in on Lime City, this is necessary. And again, that, that triangle piece can't accommodate any type of activity because then we can't really construct it. And we could, we can widen it and put it in there, but there, there'll be conflict points.
And make it clear, this property has been listed for sale for some time, signature associations, it has had this listing, so we should just go through them with the listing, you know, normal purchase.
That was the other thing I saw on, on social media. There was an accusation that somehow this was some rigged deal. This is a long, longtime family property that has a listing agent, it's been for sale for a number of years, and we're not taking it. The current owner has to agree to a purchase. Okay. Caroline?
Um, so a couple of questions. First, the property, the houses, are they on a well? Or well with septic, so it's not really buildable even if someone wanted to knock the house down?
There's sanitary accessible there, sanitary and water will come down seven ninety-five there. Water will be available probably within the year. I don't see septic coming down that section of Lime City.
Right, right.
So that's going to be a problem with septic.
And then will the new lanes, so we'll be moving lanes of seven ninety-five south onto this property?
Yeah, there's, there's going to be.
And west?
Turn, turn lanes on, well, there's going to be turn lane improvements on seven ninety-five, but most of the turn lane is to queue up traffic coming off the grade, off the, off the bridge, so that way you get through left and right turn movements.
So are we moving south onto this property or are we moving west from?
West.
West from, okay.
From Lime City.
From Lime City. Okay.
Lime City widening.
Yeah, because that's so.
Seven ninety-five.
Oh, okay, okay.
What are the only possible uses for this parcel?
Agricultural, because we, like I said, we can't have any traffic generated or solar or some other activity that doesn't, like, like a cell tower or something that doesn't generate traffic.
Just the problem with the property right now, having those intersections, and right now there's, except for the school, you know, the other three quadrants of that have driveways right on the intersection and those are problematic, so.
It's so dangerous.
Really an economic development piece in my.
Does anyone else on council have any comments or questions for Rex and Todd?
Move for.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I just want, council did do this, if you recall, with the Route sixty-four, when, when we bought that, the old greenhouse there and that ultimately saved the city probably about three hundred thousand dollars, the difference between what we bought it for and what ODOT had appraised at was about three hundred thousand, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Robert.
Move for suspension, the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Appons, one seventy-seven, Hammond. So what's the cost of the partial and where's the money coming from?
Todd and Allison.
Actually, we got a grant for two point two million dollars for this project and the money will come from the TIF.
Is Allison the TIF?
It is within the TIF, yes.
All right. You said you were going to widen this Lime City Road.
Not widen seven ninety-five and put a turn lane on the Lime City. If there's any turn lane that builds on seven ninety-five, it'll be in the center. So northbound Lime City and southbound each side will, will have turn lane improvements, mostly on, on the south side of seven ninety-five. And then widening on the east side, the turn on seven ninety-five also. I don't know what the lane configuration is. It hasn't been designed yet, but the, the intent is, is to clear that intersection so that there's not cars queued up as you're coming over the hill. So in, in all likelihood, there'll be a through movement, a right turn, dedicated right turn.
And what's, is that a hundred percent ground?
No.
You said two point two million. What's our portion?
Always twenty-eight or.
Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead, Aaron.
Aaron Comfort, five four four, Brunge Drive. This is a follow-up. Do we have a timeline on the Lime City Road project?
Which one? The, the bridge from ODOT?
Widen, you know, and then we would do this for council for.
Um, construction is scheduled to begin in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. It will have the road enclosed approximately for ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Watchel.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Bruce.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Eckel.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-three dash forty is an ordinance authorizing the administration to dispose of certain surplus property not needed for any municipal purpose and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
Move to, move to suspend the second and third reading of twenty twenty-three dash forty.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience has a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare twenty twenty-three dash forty an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt twenty twenty-three dash forty. Obidorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Eckel.
Aye.
Okay. Introduction of resolutions, Mr. Watchel?
None.
All right. Council remarks, and I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Bruce first.
Over the last fifteen years, it's been a, a good ride. A city planning to, to console for the last ten years and all good things have to come to an end. So seen Bass Pro and Heroes, Five Guys to Amazon, roundabouts to streetlights, resurfacing, stroll the streets and so many things that this city has done and hopefully I did a little bit of good. So tonight won't be my last meeting as we're moving on to a new chapter of life, so thank you all.
Thank you, Robert. Mrs. Reynolds?
Um, just thank you.
Did you announce something or did this?
No. Tonight is my last, night on console. Tonight is my last night on console.
Please, excuse me. Please wait the audience remarks. Go ahead, Mrs. Reynolds.
Uh, just thank you, Robert, for your contributions to this town and I wish you the very best in your new adventure.
Toth.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to echo those, uh, thank you for everything you did and I'm glad I got to work with you for the last year and a half and good luck and godspeed.
Sir Obidorf.
Worked with you for a lot of years, Robert, on a lot of different committees and learned a lot from you during that period of time and I wish you nothing but the best in your future.
Thank you.
Mrs. Eckel.
Um, thanks. I'm sad to see you go. I've enjoyed working with you and as always, more engineers you can have on a project, the better, so I can, you know, having a light brain across the aisle has always been good. You brought, you brought a lot of good things to this community and served it well and I know you're on to better things, but we're sad to see you go. But your baseball game commute will be much less and you should have a lot of good stuff going on.
Yeah, closer to the family, so.
Yep, yep. So thank you. I do have other stuff, though, to talk about. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I want to congratulate the hundredth graduating class from Rosford High School that graduated on Saturday, including my grace, but it was kind of a cool, um, cool thing to be a part of his a hundredth year. The, I want to remind everyone, there's a safety committee meeting Wednesday at five thirty at the annex. And I want to schedule, I want to actually have the committee of the whole on June fifth for the month of June to discuss funding for the fire department, including the two upcoming levies that were talked, the one talked about in the recreation report. I think that's something that we all need to blend into this conversation because we don't want to ask for something now and then again and again, and there is a fire lover coming up, so I want to pull that all into discussion on the fifth. And that's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We did meet on finance and I'll work with Chris to make sure you get the meeting minutes before that meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
What time for the committee of the whole, seven, six?
Six.
Mr. Marquette.
It's, Robert, I've learned so much from sitting across from you over the last four terms plus, you've made us a much better body. You brought, bring so much to, to us and we're a mission. So EF Hutton is leaving the building.
Thank you, Greg.
God bless you and best to you.
Hey, you and I used to butt heads every now and then, but I would tell people that's what brothers do. Always respected you, always loved you. You made me better, you made this city better, and for that, I thank you. Okay. Audience remarks. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Louis Bauer, two seventy-one, Margaret Place, Perry, Ohio. Dr. Bruce, one quick thing, I was watching a video the other day in front of Chuck Dursick in Halloween and you were passing out pencils when you were riding the first time. I have a couple of questions and it's not argumentative. I don't intend to be, but we have to resolve some immediate issues and one of them is, what is the city's intent with the last remaining structure at five twenty-nine, the former greenhouse property? I've asked in emails, nobody will answer. Now, that certainly is not an unsafe structure. It's structurally sound. There's engineering report recently, there's no bricks in the concrete, it's a cement block building. It used to be the shop, the flower shop, the greenhouse. The roof is true, there are no leaks, could use some new roofing, but there are no leaks at this time. What's the city's intent?
We're going to abate the nuisance.
We're going to follow what the nuisance board.
Pardon?
We're going to follow the nuisance board's order that found that you had a nuisance there and the city will abate it. We're going to follow the timeline with the extension that was granted to you by the city.
Toth, which extension?
Well, the nuisance board.
You're going to demolish that building?
I'm answering, we are going to follow the nuisance abatement board's order to abate the nuisance.
Kevin, it's a yes or no question. Are you going to demolish that building?
This is audience remarks, Mr. Bauer. You've threatened to sue the city on numerous occasions. I have instructed the administration not to talk to you about this issue. occasions. I have instructed the administration not to talk to you about this issue. We are going to follow the order of the nuisance abatement board.
Kevin, there is no order of nuisance abatement board.
There is, Mr. Bauer. You've received a copy. You also received a copy of the extension that the city, I'm talking, the extension that the city granted you gratuitously to remove your property.
Pardon?
You were given a timeframe to abate the nuisance. The the minute, the the board found you, that you violated the statute by having a nuisance, they gave you an extra thirty days to abate the nuisance. At that time, then, the nuisance was being abated. You asked for an additional extension, which the city granted you. The city will be abating the nuisance after that timeframe has passed. The city will be abating the nuisance after that timeframe has passed.
You do, you you can see this. City council, this is fundamentally wrong. Every step of the way, fundamentally wrong. Not responding like that to threats. Kevin, we we have some differences on that fact pattern that you just.
We're not trying this tonight.
But we're not, we're gonna.
We're not, no.
One more question, Mayor. Mayor, one more question.
Go ahead.
What about the items that were able to be taken to the back of the property at five twenty-nine?
Mr. Bauer, because of the many threats that you have made to me personally, I refer everything to legal counsel.
Everything has to go through Kevin even.
Those personal property items were placed back there. You were given an opportunity to take them off the property?
All the items, we were given the opportunity that day.
Have you taken them off the property?
I'm, we're trying, I'm working out there every day, mister. You, it's not reasonable to have them done by Wednesday or tomorrow. What about the timber frame?
The city will abate the nuisance pursuant to the board's order.
Well, frankly, Kevin, the board never voted on the record that they were affirming the action.
The board issued.
You have thirty, thirty more seconds.
The board issued an opinion that you had nuisance property there. And sitting here, you actually admitted to ninety percent of those being nuisance items.
Except, Kevin, except for the fact that to abate the nuisance, you took that and extended it. Yeah, move them. It should have plow been taken off, not a junk plow, off agriculturally zoned property. Now, that's what's bad. The timber frame is a forty thousand dollar piece. It's not a a barn that was taken apart and tried to be used. Fabricated.
You have five seconds.
By Riperton. Council, can I have three more?
If it's worth that kind of money, why don't you remove it?
We are moving things and we are proceeding, Kevin.
You had sixty days to do that.
Kevin, you want the argumentative, I just want fact.
It's over. It's over. Please sit down.
You do. You're shot. And council.
Is there anyone else? Any other public comments?
Pardon?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
I'm Tammy Burchell. I live at one thirteen Bergen Street. And I'm here um, in regards to the eight special events that were given to the council last um, council meeting.
Yes.
Where DNEs wanted to have special outdoor events that have like a noise, noise variance. And I'm here because it's already too loud. So I don't want them. Um, the neighbors don't want them. Um, I just wanna sleep. And it's, I know I live next to a bar, but the bar noise has always been inside the bar. Now it's outside the bar. And it's too loud already.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Kevin, we only passed two of those, right? And.
As a test.
And we changed the time to from one to eleven. Is that right?
One?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that right?
Council can do whatever, whatever they choose. I think the one was on a Sunday till.
One was the past Sunday.
Okay.
Till nine and then the other was at eleven.
Yeah, there was, then there was multiple.
What's our normal noise ordinance?
I know, it's uh, ten. I think it's ten.
Ten o'clock? Caroline?
Um, can we get a decibel meter? I know years ago, they used to have that.
It's probably in our ordinance, isn't it?
I think it.
Do you have one, Todd?
It's not, it's not for music, the decibel meter. That's used for like exhaust with bolts at the marina. Uh, and they're really, they're unreliable.
Can I make a suggestion?
I mean, every, like, tonight, every time, like, there's live music, it's out on the patio now.
Mm-hmm. Why don't uh?
Like, tonight, there're gonna be live music.
Gotcha.
And it's loud. And you guys wanna know how loud it is? Drive by.
Yeah. I'll give you, give you a call tomorrow. We'll get together. We'll see if we can't work something out. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
If anybody on council wants to.
Louis. Louis, enough, enough.
Or anybody in the audience, if you wanna see the building question.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Unrelated, Erin Crawford. Um, I'm wondering about, the city now owns that parking lot next to dogs, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering about the layout of the alleyway and the parking lot. It's completely counterintuitive. You're not gonna drive past the building and then do a sharp right, like a V-shaped right into the alleyway. The right now, it's got arrows pointing that that's an in rather than an out. You know, people are not obeying that arrow. Um, so when you pull in from the other side of the building and you pull into the parking lot, all the parking, instead of pulling in diagonally, the way you would be driving in to the parking lot, is the opposite direction. So you may wanna reconsider how that parking lot and alleyway are um, laid out in the future to make it much easier for patrons.
Todd, can you explain the reason for that design?
If we re-lay it out, we lose half the parking spots, because it has to meet a standard for vehicular movements. So with the current configuration, that maximizes if if council wants to change the pattern and eliminate most of the spots and have a more natural flow. But a lot of the movements going out onto uh, superior, yes, superior Dixie Highway, um, are not proper already, so. And I'm not sure if they're not important, but people go whichever way they need to to get in and out of there.
Kind of design.
About perpendicular versus diagonal even. I mean, maybe you would lose spots, I'm not sure, but.
You would.
It's just.
It's counterintuitive.
I'm new around in there. I've been in there. It's path. People are parking in the alleyway and blocking that route off.
Some people have trucks that are forty foot long.
This design, you got a design to come in that alley, though, don't you, Todd?
Todd?
You got that, you kind of have a design to come in off the alley and as the access point of the entrance?
Off of Bergen?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not what people are used to, but that's, that, that allows you to have that angle parking the way it is. And we got some spots in there.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jeff?
Jeff Appleson, one seventy-seven, Hannah.
I've got a comment on what Erin just said. Um, can you, can you make it so it's just one way, like from the, between the Dairy Queen, Dairy, whatever it is, and the flower shop? And make the exit point uh, coming out of the alley? Because one day I tried to pull in there, and I understand, I guess the lady that owns the flower shop owns a piece of that property where the entrance arrow was painted on. She's got her car parked there. She had a delivery van next to her car, and there was a pickup truck. So I couldn't get into the parking lot.
You got into the parking lot.
I did not.
You did not?
No, we did not. I did not.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Am I being a liar or do?
No, I'm not being a liar.
No, you're not being a liar, but are you calling me one?
No, I'm not calling.
We're not, we're not doing this tonight.
I can get into the parking lot. If I, if I go around the alley. But what I'm saying is, if you create one direction and after it's an exit.
If council wants me to take a look at it, you know, and that will impact the number of parking spots. What? I'm not gonna sit here and.
That's it.
Engineering this.
Let's go.
Wait a minute, I've got three minutes.
That's it.
I've got three minutes.
You've already spoke. We're not redesigning a parking lot tonight.
I've got something else.
You can, you can call him. You've taken three minutes.
I've got three minutes.
No, we're moving on.
I've got three minutes.
We're moving on.
And you're eating into my time.
We're moving on.
So anyways, it won't change the direction of the parking spaces. It'll just change the flow of the.
Do you design parking lots? Because I don't. I I have engineers help us with that and lay it out.
And they lay it out, an entrance and an exit with a car, a truck and a truck, right? It's sitting in the middle of it.
That's it. We're moving on. Let's go.
And I couldn't get into the parking.
Need a second to adjourn.
That's one thing.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?